...owners to make a website. Squarespace includes hosting, e-commerce, and 24/7 customer care. Learn more at squarespace.com/NPR. From Kaspersky, giving 400 million individuals and organizations the power to protect against cyber criminals, hackers, and other internet threats. Learn more at kaspersky.com. That's K-A-S-P-E-R-S-K-Y dot com. And from Constant Contact, providing small businesses and nonprofits email and online marketing tools to engage customers and connect with new ones, for sending newsletters, promoting events, and tracking results. More at constantcontact.com.
WDET is supported by the Great Lakes Culinary Center in Southfield, presenting a sushi-making workshop with Dr. Sushi, Thursday evening, February 5th. Guests learn how to roll and then dine on their creations. Ingredients provided. Register at GLCulinaryCenter.com.
Traffic reports made possible by the TJ Martel Foundation.
Good evening. It's 6:59. I'm Jerome Vaughn, and you're listening to WDET Detroit, Wayne State's public radio station. Detroit Today coming up in just a minute. Traffic is sponsored by Priority Health, which lets members review ratings of any doctor in their network. US 23 southbound closed at Silver Lake Road because of an accident after M36. Emergency crews are on the scene there. Traffic is stopped all the way backed up to I-96. Avoid that area. 94 eastbound after I-75, watch for an accident being cleared from the right shoulder. Partly cloudy and cold tonight, lows around 14 degrees. Right now in Detroit, partly cloudy skies, 23 degrees.
The next station is Ramon Center.
From the Midtown Detroit Studios of WDET, this is Detroit Today.
President Obama says increasing cybersecurity is important to national security. We'll hear from an expert who explains how our system is vulnerable and how we should improve our own security at home. Also, less than a week until the Super Bowl, Patriots and quarterback downgrading.
I'd like to call to order the January 26 meeting of the Shelby Township Planning Commission. Madam Secretary, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Dallo.
Here.
Mr. DeSico.
Here.
Ms. Casali.
Here.
Mr. Bernardi.
Here.
Mr. Turner.
Here.
Mr. Appone.
Here.
Mr. Vire.
Yeah.
Chairman Moffett, we have a quorum.
Great, thank you. Next is approval of the agenda. Before I entertain a motion, there are two items that were on the draft agenda that have been requested by the petitioners to be removed or postponed to another date. One being Site Plan Number 14-40, William and Jennifer Betham. And then the second, Number 14-03, Special Land Use 1, Mitchell Foster.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Turner.
Recommend approval of the agenda. Removing those two items at the petitioner's request.
Thank you.
Support.
Moved and supported. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, next item is approval of the minutes from the January 12 meeting.
So moved.
Okay. There are no --
Support.
Been moved and supported. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. This evening, we have several issues that were tabled or delayed for some reason or another. The first one, from our previous meeting, a rezoning petition from the township of Shelby regarding parcel Number 14-0705200015, a petition to rezone the property from Light Manufacturing to R12. The reason for the table, the last meeting, was to allow for the property owner to attend and address the rezoning request, offer their opinion. At this time, is the property owner or representative in the audience? Going once, twice. I don't see either of them here. So at that point, I guess I'll entertain a motion. We've given the person an opportunity to address.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Turner.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval of rezoning petition Number 10-14, proposing a change in zoning for 5641 Mound Road from Light Manufacturing to R12 Multiple Family Low Rise based on the following findings. The change in zoning would provide a more uniform and consistent development pattern on the west side of Mound Road. The current zoning pattern in this area does not fully conform to the established development pattern. Removing the intrusion of LM District into a largely residential area minimizes the potential for nuisances that may be associated with manufacturing uses. The shape of the site may not fully lend itself to development for LM purposes, and other more appropriate zoned LM sites are available for development in the township.
Support.
Okay, moved by Turner, support by Moore. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Dallo.
The R12 is, do we have to remain the R12 in this motion here? Can we remove the unit to a multiple family low rise until we see this when the property owner ready to develop this property?
To the attorney, I don't believe we can. I guess we could request of the petitioner to change the zoning.
I think it would be better if we just left, I think, left it as it's been proposed.
Okay.
The board certainly could rezonate to a lesser zoning, but I think, given the shape of the parcel, I don't think the number is all that substantial, Mr. Dallo, because I don't think they'd achieve the full development potential of that many units per acre.
Thank you.
And Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Turner.
I mentioned that last time because I had a concern about them cramming too much residential development in a smaller piece because they have the wetlands, they have the easement in that area, which reduces the size. So as Mr. Winn said, R12 is a recommendation. Given the setbacks and all they have to build, they won't get R12. It'll get something very less than that.
Okay. But also recognize that we're just a recommending body, that ultimately that this is going to go before the board for final determination.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, is there any other questions on the motion? Hearing none, I'll call the roll. Commissioner Turner.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Dallo.
Yes.
Commissioner DeSico.
No.
Commissioner Bernardi.
No.
Commissioner Casali.
Yes.
Commissioner Vire.
Yes.
Commissioner Appone.
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Okay, next item, Site Plan Number 14-22, Daniel Bell, Brampton Court Condominiums. And again, this was something that came back to us, I think, late summer, and was sent back with a couple of questions. I see the representative of the petitioners here. If I could get your name and address for the record.
Good evening. I'm Pete Snyder from Urban Land Consultants, 8800 23 Mile Road, Shelby Township, representing the petitioner. Again, as the chair already explained, this is a project that came to last year in 2014, in July, I believe it was. There were considerable comments about many things, mostly about the trees and about the detention pond that was shown at the time, although there were certainly some other comments by the planner that needed to be addressed as well. So if I could ask the chair for the mobile mic, I'll -- Thank you. I don't know if they're going to get this up on the overhead pretty quick, but again, this is the basic, it's the same piece of property. It's seven and a half acres on the west side of Shana Road, north of 23, south of 24. It's sort of a, we'll call it a piece that's left after the Woodlands of Shelby and Birchfield subdivision was developed, again, seven and a half acres. It's zoned R1B. The proposal that we have brought you is R1B, and it conforms in every way to those zoning standards. The revisions specifically are, we added the continuation of the Shana Road landscaping along the front across these two parcels, shown as Unit 12 and Unit 13. One other thing, this Unit 13 on the July submittal of last year was shown as an out parcel. The applicant has chosen to make that a condominium unit now as well, so it'd fall into the same restrictions in terms of homes to be built. The utility layout has been revised substantially. I know you don't usually look at the utilities much during the site plan stage, but it's very relevant in this case because of the comments about trees. And the tree survey, which was prepared and has been submitted, I think it shows over 455 trees on the property. The gray shaded area on this shows the areas that would be cleared for the development of the subdivision. I want to specifically highlight, the former location of the detention pond was right down here against the Woodlands of Shelby. We did some wrangling back and forth with the Office of Public Works, Macomb County, and at the end of it, it was determined that the detention pond would not be required. Again, it's been our position that it never should have been. The outlet through Birchfield was designed adequate for the full discharge of the site, so a detention pond should not have been required. At this point, that allowed us to take the detention pond out, and we simply chose to take a large portion of that area and make it passive open space on the site plan, so it would be perpetually preserving the trees in that area. That band varies. It's, I think, about 32 feet at one end and more like 39 feet at the other end. But it's just a band of passive open space where the trees would be preserved. In all of the over 450 trees, I think this shows, I did a rough count, I think it's 87 trees to be removed with the development. So, and I think that, again, there were a variety of more minor comments that we addressed on the site plan, and we submitted a letter going through those, but those are more in the, I don't know, they're almost typo, very small revision sort of items, that we submitted a letter covering. So, again, with that, I'm certainly available for any questions, but we respectfully like you to act on this this evening.
The only other issue that I recall being raised, and again, you know, this isn't necessarily a site plan-specific issue, but just sort of as a courtesy on, you know, what, you know, some elevations or what types of buildings, which you did submit to us, what the builders looking, do you want to drive some or?
Yes, I can. They were submitted by the applicant. We did not prepare those, but again, they were submitted with the revision. Again, they show homes of similar character and very similar size to the surrounding neighborhood. They are every bit as nice and comparable to the homes that are already existing around there.
Okay. So I'm seeing, you know, three elevations and with one, 2840 to 3,035 square feet, one 2952 to 3171 square feet, and then the largest at 3,077 to 3293 square feet.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, all side entry and nice brick front.
Okay.
Sides.
It's 2840. Mr. Winn, any comments?
Mr. Snyder did a good job of summarizing. The design changes are substantial, as much as they've maintained the tree canopy as much as they can, recognizing that when the homes are built, you know, the trees will be removed for the home sites with only within the building envelope and 10 feet. Then, once a person moves in there, they can take down other trees if they want, but the development process itself will limit the tree removal substantially. And not having to put in the retention basin was a fairly substantial improvement in terms of preserving some open space on site. You rarely see that. There are just a few other minor comments. The tree permit will have to be revised before it goes to the board. Otherwise, we're in a position to recommend approval. Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. To the board, any questions of the petitioner?
Mr. Chairman.
Turner.
Mr. Snyder, I look at the plan, and I'm looking at the layout, and there's a notation for side entry garage doors. Number 12, is the way that's positioned on that plan, is that a, the way that arrow's coming out, is that a garage facing, or is that, am I seeing that wrong?
It's a...
Yeah, so you're referring to Unit 12 with this house. This house actually fronts Shana. So to the house, it's a side entry garage facing Shana.
Okay, thanks. Okay. Hearing no other questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner DeSico.
There's a question from --
No, doesn't matter. Public hearing is closed.
All right. I'd like to make a motion to approve of the preliminary plans for Brampton Court Condominiums 14-22. All remaining department comments will be addressed in the submission of the final condominium application.
Support. Okay, it's been moved by DeSico, support by Dallo. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, I'll call the roll. Commissioner DeSico?
Yes.
Mr. Dallo?
Yes.
Commissioner Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Casali?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner Appone?
Yes.
Commissioner Vire?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Vire.
Are we going to ask for the public to have any input?
We had, we'd close the public hearing on this issue.
Oh, yes.
Okay, the chair votes yes.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Okay, next item, Site Plan Number 14-45, Patrick Bell, regarding a Tim Hortons donut on Hall Road. Is the petitioner here?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Patrick Bell with Tim Hortons, 565 East Grand River Avenue, Brighton, Michigan, 48116. Thank you for the opportunity to be in front of you today. Today, we are proposing a brand-new Tim Hortons cafe and bake shop on Hayes Road. It's a portion of the Meyer development that's there now. We'll actually be parcelling off the property from the Meyer development. This is one of our new restaurants. It's approximately 1,778 square feet. And if you've seen any of our new developments recently, we've gone through and renovated some of the locations here in the local area, but this is one of our newest buildings. This is probably going to be in, you know, probably one of the first 10 built in the United States and Canada. The second one was actually built in Rochester Hills just recently. It's a real great concept inside, taking us really back to our coffee shop roots. We've got some soft seating in there with some media, such as TV, free Wi-Fi. We've got a fireplace, and it's just a great place to come in and sit down and meet. The site will also have outdoor seating. It's, you know, self-serve outdoor seating, so there'll be some patio furniture out there and a nice guardrail around it and whatnot for our guests to come in and dine. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. To the board, any questions? Mr. Dallo.
Oh, Mr. Chairman. Is this, is this the, Tim Horton, the franchisee, own this property, or is a developer that is developing it?
All of our restaurants are franchisee-owned. Whether the property will be owned, the property itself will be owned corporately or by a franchisee or by a developer is yet to be determined. At this point, the direction on this project is that it'll be corporately owned, but that may change prior to final construction starting.
You were talking about the new designs.
Yes.
Are you removing the bricks from all of the new designs, or this?
I'm sorry, removing the...
The bricks from the outside. You, you don't see any bricks in this?
No, we're not removing the bricks. You know, you've probably seen a number of different restaurants. This building itself has like a cement siding on it, and I did note the comment from staff about, you know, kind of supplementing that. And we're more than willing to, we have a brick facade that we can put on this building and leave the stone in place, too. So that's not a problem for us at all to do that.
Thank you. Chair.
Go ahead, Bill.
Mr. Turner.
I'm happy to hear you say you would be willing to put a brick facade, because I go to the one at 18 and Mound, Sterling Heights, practically every day, and that's brick. Looks a lot better, in my opinion, than a wood siding one, and I think it would hold up better in the long run. So I'm glad to hear, I'm glad Mr. Doc Dallo pointed out, and I'm glad you agreed to that. Thank you.
Vire. Mr. Vire.
Oh.
I'll say.
Could you tell us how close the building will be to the exit in the, to the north on Hayes Road, to Hayes, out of the parking lot?
How close the building is to Hayes Road?
No, to the exit is north of the building. There's an exit from the parking lot to Hayes Road that is north of your proposed building. That right or wrong?
Yeah, it's right there.
Huh?
Chair.
Yeah.
Would you grab the microphone?
There is no left turn on the exit that goes by the Sonic, and that exit is heavily used. That's why I'm asking the question.
Do you want to press the mute button?
Just so, just so we clarify the question, how far this entrance is from our building?
Yes.
In this direction?
Yeah.
I'm going to say approximately 140 feet would be my guess.
How far is the setback off, how far is the setback off of Hayes Road?
The setback off, this setback right here is 84.25.
They've exceeded the setback.
Okay, that's all. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Winn.
Okay, no earth-shattering comments here, just some more details. We didn't do a preliminary review of this. We've worked with Mr. Bell before, and we wanted to get him on the agenda. So some of the comments we have are not a reflection of any omissions, it's just some minor details. We would like, as we've seen on the other sites where Myers has split off the out parcels, we do like to see a larger-scale map showing this in relationship to the entire Meyer site, along with parking counts. I would suggest that Myers, I think the last time we did this calculation, we had those buildings in front, they still are more than compliant for parking, but I have to run those calculations one more time. The site is somewhat smaller when it's split off than what we allow in the C3, but we amended the ordinance a few years ago to allow smaller splits other than five acres in the C3, as long as there's cross-access agreements with Meyer, and that's easy to do. We need trash and closure screening details, specify the height of the parking lot fixtures. We did ask the question about the brick, and I agree with Mr. Turner that I think that model would fit a little better on this site. And then just a few comments from the engineer, but most of those are easily correctable with the final submission and engineering, Mr. Chairman. Otherwise, this is the last Myers out parcel, I think. There's nothing left.
Oh, really?
You know, it was, the other comment was landscaping. There's some big pine trees out there, and I'm not sure, they almost hide the building. You might want to consider maybe modestly upgrading, maybe some deciduous trees. I don't think the pine trees are a great street tree. And, you know, when Myers first did this, they worked, but they're kind of getting a little straggly-looking, and I don't think it complements your size.
Okay, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, back to the board.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
Mr. Bell, is there competing distance between one Tim Horton to the other? Because there's one like a little west of M53 versus that, so...
Right, right. You know, in general, we try and keep them at a certain distance, but the most important factor to us is travel routes, because really, any fast-food restaurant is not a destination for folks. It's something that you're going to hit on your way to work or on, I mean, while you're taking the kids to school or anything like that. So it's really travel routes that we look at, and Hayes, you know, as you well know, is a very well-traveled road that we think is underserved by this type of restaurant.
He wants to take the load off of Starbucks.
Yeah, I was going to say.
Right.
They're four Starbucks within a quarter, a quarter square mile.
Right, those Starbucks, they need all the help they can get from us.
In the meantime, we don't want to be a cause or a reason to shut the lid on also, like Big B's is shutting down in an hour or two, so...
Well, there was that Tim Hortons inside of, thank you, sorry, inside of the Meyer...
Correct.
Right, and so this is the replacement. I went to get a copy, and it's no longer there.
Yeah, I believe our contract with Meyer had expired.
Oh.
So it's something that we just moved on from.
Nice. I do have a question for you. Hi, Mr. Bell.
Hi.
I do, the front door, the door of, that's facing Hayes, and then you have, right directly, if you're exiting, you would enter onto oncoming traffic from the drive-thru? Correct?
Yes, the door does face Hayes. As you exit, you would walk out into the, really into the patio area as you, as you came out, and then as you were going to your vehicle, you would, you know, obviously cross the park.
So is there a fence there, a half fence?
Along the drive-thru.
Along the drive-thru.
Typically, what we have is at the corner of the building, which would be the southeast corner, we would have a section of fence coming out just to stop people from blindly walking out from the building into the drive-thru portion, but it would not typically encompass that entire area out there.
I was just more concerned with even a short fence, just for people to actually stop and be conscious.
Yes, absolutely.
There's a drive-thru right there.
Absolutely.
That's exactly right.
And this site in particular, I think it's less of a concern because there is no parking over there, but still something that we typically have on our buildings, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, you ready for a motion? Yes, Mr. Vire.
I move to approve the site plan for Patrick Bell, Tim Hortons Donut Site Plan Number 14-45, subject to the submission of a revised plan addressing all department comments.
Support.
Okay, moved by Vire.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Dallo.
Can we add the brick situation to the motion, please?
Pardon? But they're going to add brick to the facade. Okay. The supporter, he's on record as changing everything.
Yeah, that's part of the, right.
Okay. Mr. Appone, you agree?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the roll. Commissioner Vire.
Yes.
Commissioner Appone.
Yes.
Commissioner Turner.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Casali.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernardi.
Yes.
Commissioner DeSico.
Yes.
Commissioner Dallo.
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
What you'll get is the minutes with, you know, make the corrections, resubmit seven sets, stamp and sign, and you're on your way.
Sounds great. Thank you very much.
Nice job.
Okay, the next item, Site Plan 14-33, Special Land Use Number Three, Lucas Towing LLC requesting a special land use to permit towing and tractor trailer yard at 4735220.
Good evening. Bill Mosher, Apex Engineering Group, on behalf of the petitioner, 2959 Rambling Way, Bloomfield Township, Michigan, 48302. I don't know if Mr. Winn would like to address some of the comments first, or I can. It's kind of a unique situation. We were here in November.
Why don't you, and make sure you speak into the microphone, please.
We were here in November and to seek site plan and special land use for Lucas Towing as well as US Cargo Express. There seemed to be some, maybe some confusion on what site we were actually on. Some of the, some, there were some correspondence about access not being, or not being approved, some back taxes, and not compatible with the surrounding area. We, prior to going to the board, that the back taxes were paid. We tried to provide all the necessary information from the easements that were previously recorded when the township approved Fritz Enterprise Recycling Center. So those two items were part of the record for the denial. The third one was the non-compatible use. We feel that there is an existing towing yard on 22 Mall Road, just south of this property. On both sides of the entrance, there are contractor yards, as well as a metal recycling facility directly to the west, and then the easterly portion of the vacant, and there's nothing there. So we felt that we had some good grounds to go to the board. We went to the board with a recommendation of denial. The board thought that maybe everybody would be better served if we came back to the Planning Commission for further discussion, so we're here again.
Okay. Now, I do recall that there was, there was a concern from one of your neighbors that by accessing your site, you were going to encroach on his property. Did that issue get resolved?
Correct. And that was actually more of an instance when there were some asphalt millings that were placed, that the delivery of the milling truck had some extra, and they placed it on the neighbor's property unbannounced to the neighbor. That has been addressed and rectified.
So Mr. Stromagley is fine with this? Okay. To the board, any questions for the petitioner?
I have a question.
Bernardi.
It says in here, you resolved one of the issues, back taxes. Could you, Mr. Luca has... has two properties prior that were back taxes. We had spoke about in the last meeting that were owed, and you're saying these have been resolved?
I do not know if the property on the south side of 22... He originally came to the township to get the same use on that piece of property a few years ago. I was not involved in that, but I know that I delivered the tax bill paid to the planning department on this site.
Because I spoke with the assessing department today and also the treasurer's office, and one of Mr. Lucas' properties, last number 047, from 2013, those back taxes are still owed. They have not been resolved.
Okay.
So the 2013 summer and winter have not been resolved. The '14s have not, but they have till March, and the same with the other site, the 2014, but they still have till March and that. But it seems like Mr. Lucas came to us a couple of times and said this issue would be resolved. This is probably the third time, and this has still not been resolved on these back taxes.
Unfortunately, I have not... I have no information on the other parcel. I know that this one came before, and it was an issue unbeknownst to me. I went back, and we took care of that issue on this site. I don't know what's happened on the other, and if you say they've not been paid, that might well be the case, but I feel that this site is what's before the commission this evening. He's... I think there was a misunderstanding. Generally, he thought this site was ready to move in, and so it might have been more of a zoning compliance issue in his mind instead of a site plan. He has made considerable improvements to the site. He's made every effort, I believe now, on this site to get going on it, and that's the only thing I can speak of.
Why, I mean, I would like to see that issue on these back taxes from 2013. I want Mr. Lucas' properties to be resolved first before I can support this. And I have a question for our planning director. Mr. Wynn, what is our ordinance regarding barbed wire?
We allow barbed wire in industrial settings.
Industrial sites, okay, because I did visit the site today, and where Mr. Lucas is at, it's...
Any other questions from the board? Mr. Wynn, your thoughts?
Well, I supported this before. I appreciate the concerns that were raised about the taxes. I think we can only relate taxes to the specific site we're dealing with. It's typically not an issue that we've addressed in any application. The access has been resolved, and, you know, as far as the use goes, this isn't... This is an appropriate land use with the surrounding area. It's not proximate to any immediately adjacent residential. The site was used for outdoor storage, for a construction yard, Mr. DeBuck, and then for the recycling business, which really never got off the ground too much. So in my view, it's just a different nature of recycling or a different nature of storage, and I think this is an appropriate use at this location.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
I guess a question for the attorney. When we look at this property, I'll make comments on that in a second, but I understand the issue of the taxes being owed on this property. Can we make a determination on this property based on if he owes taxes over here on this property or that one, or does it have to stay focused on the one that we're considering?
I think if at all, it's only on the one we're considering. I'm not sure if we could deny it. I'm not sure... Glenn, do you know anything in the ordinance that would prohibit it?
Well, we've never... We've never done it that way. I mean, I think it didn't look good that he came in and had these deficiencies. I think it's really... It's just not a... It's a little sloppy way of doing business, but now that he's resolved it, I don't think we could go any further than that.
Well, it hasn't been resolved, no.
Yeah, but on this site it has.
Okay, yeah.
This particular site it has, and I think going beyond that, I don't know what authority we have to do that. I'd be reluctant to have that be a factor in a decision-making. I mean, I've been dealing... You know, this site has been challenging for years. Every business needs a home somewhere, and I think, given this location, what it was used for in the past, this is probably an appropriate location. Having said all that, you know, I'm going to be careful to watch this because we want to make sure it's done properly. You know, there's some... There's some conditions that have to be addressed, and, you know, we make sure that Mr. Yucich follows them. I don't want to see a bunch of abandoned cars on this site.
Mr. Chairman, as I look at the site, I know to this part of 22-Mile does pose some development, redevelopment challenges for the township. I look at the site. I drove down 22-Mile Road, and it is far enough back where you can't really see from 22 what's happening. I don't think it'd be come a visual blight or a nuisance for anybody driving. And it appears as though the tax issue for this parcel property has been resolved, and I understand that the easement act, the cross-access easement issue that was brought up has also been resolved, correct?
Yes, sir.
Given all that, and given what I see, I too, I would think this would be an appropriate location for something like this, and I think I could support it. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wynn.
Is there evidence that the tax liability has been taken care of?
I believe copies of the receipts were included in the packets this evening.
Most of those tax bills came over to you, did they not, to the county?
They would have if they were delinquent, yeah.
Yeah, if some of them are over two years old, I would think... I wouldn't expect you to go in and look at the record, but I think it's relevant to the circumstance. If people don't pay the taxes, the attorney don't get paid, and the planner don't get paid, and the thing...
Trustee doesn't get paid.
Things start to fall apart. However, I guess we'll just have to go along with the majority of the planning commission, and we'll wait to see what... How the vote goes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Dalu.
One other thing, if I may. This gentleman runs a trucking firm. Does he have a trucking, an over-the-road trucking?
Correct.
Does he intend to park those trucks there?
That's part of the use, correct, yes.
It is part of the...
Yes, it's Lucas Towing and U.S. Cargo Express.
So that would diminish Mr. Turner's thoughts about looking at something from 22-Mile Road, would it? Would it not? I mean...
I don't think you can see that... Any of that site from 22-Mile Road. There's enough...
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Dalu. Mr. Wynn, the property has been used for whatever he is proposing to use presently. Do we have another trucking company or towing company in our township? Do they comply with all of the regulation that we have for their uses, considering that they're in the running business right now, as far as drainage, pavement, lighting, access, and...
We have two similar uses. There is another towing yard just to the south of this on the north side of 22-Mile Road, and yes, they fully comply. And then there's another trucking company just west on 22-Mile, the south side of 22-Mile Road, that took an old site. We made them come back with a site plan, and now they fully comply as well. So we're applying the same standards in one parcel at a time, trying to get these sites to look a little better, function a little better, recognizing that you can't fully reach back in time and, you know, fully conform, but I think we're making progress. The advantage that this site has is it's not readily visible from 22-Mile Road, so you don't have that visual concern, as Mr. Turner said. Also, there's no immediate single-family budding up to it. That's not to say we're not careful in making sure it's done properly, but some of those normal considerations aren't as critical in this case as they are in other sites.
To the applicant, Mr. Chairman, you said you addressed the easement issue.
Correct.
How was that addressed? Is there like a letter in writing from the owner, or how was that addressed?
I supplied the recorded easement documents to the planning department.
Easement, recorded?
There was actually two sets of easements. There was an original set of easements when Mr. DeBuck purchased the property, and he had to obtain those ingress and egress easements from the neighbor, and then as part of the construction of this access road...
Was here.
During the engineering, the alignment was revised by the county to make it a 90-degree angle at 22-Mile Road. So when the pavement was placed, it was outside of the original easement, so when Fritz Enterprises came back for their site plan and recycling and special land use, that the neighbor said, "We need to address this now because the pavement is not within the easement." Fritz Enterprises went through the exercise to obtain the additional easements from the neighbor, and there were two more easements, one adjacent to 22-Mile Road, and then one adjacent to the railroad right away, on the north side of the railroad right away. So there's actually four easements that take into account the ingress and egress.
Okay, because I still see... I see the letter of assignment from one company to the other for the easement, but the present owners of the easement, they still confirming that there is only 35 feet or 30 feet, and the use is more than 30 feet.
As part of the documents we had to supply per the approval process for Fritz Enterprises, that the township engineer felt they were sufficient for Fritz Enterprises, and it was my understanding that those... If the neighbor was not... It's okay with what had transpired from the last meeting. I'm sure there would have been correspondence from him addressing that fact that they were not addressed.
Mr. Wynn, are you comfortable that the access agreements are in place?
Well, I think I'm comfortable they're in place. The question, I think, that Mr. Stromalia raises, are they sufficient enough to accommodate the truck turning rate I... If you want to make that a condition of verifying that, I'm happy to do that.
Okay, yeah, why don't we do that? Now, I asked you that question specifically, and you said Mr. Stromaglia signed off on this.
The applicant's...
You know, it's been a long day for me, but I asked that question, right?
Well, the applicant met with Mr. Stromalia, and they seemed to be on the same page, and I feel that he would have... He knew we were coming back to the planning commission. He knew we were going to the board in December, and I believe that if he would not have agreed to those terms, he would have let the township know.
All right, maybe whoever makes the motion, if you could include maybe a line that... If it's in favor, that the planning director contact Mr. Stromalia and make sure that he's in...
Be happy to do that.
Okay. Unless there are any other questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Cassali.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Site Plan 14-33, SLU-3, with the condition that the planning director contacts Mr. Stromalia in regards to comments made this evening.
Chairman, could I offer... Did you not get a copy of my review on this? Okay, I apologize. Can I offer a couple more suggestions for a motion?
Please.
Including... But the basis for it would be, the use of the site is consistent with surrounding land use pattern, which is predominantly industrial nature, including considerable outdoor storage. Number two, there are no immediately budding residential uses that would be adversely impacted by this business. Three, adequate access is provided to the site from an existing easement and paved driver to 22-Mile Road. And four, revised site plan must be provided, addressing comments from the planning director, township engineer, and building director, and then the fifth comment would be verification of the adequacy of the access by the planning department.
Wonderful job throwing your voice with Commissioner Cassali.
I apologize for...
And support by Mr. Turner, was it? Any questions on the motion? As interesting as it was. All right. Hearing none, I'll call the roll. Commissioner Cassali.
Yes.
Commissioner Turner.
Yes.
Commissioner Dalu.
No.
Commissioner DeCicco.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernardi.
No.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Weyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Bone.
No.
And the chair votes yes.
Thank you very much for letting us come by.
Next, planning directors report.
The only thing to report now is, tomorrow night, Mr. Moth and Mrs. Cassali, Mr. Turner, Mr. Bone, and I are meeting to review the master plan proposals from the consultants to kind of get a handle on those, with the hope that we would be then scheduling some interviews with those firms to determine which one would be the best to help us with the new master plan revision, and we have six really good applications or proposals.
Very good. The next item is business from the floor. Somebody want to address the body? You have three minutes.
Sylvia Kokosa, Flintlock Ridge Road, Page 26 of the master plan, under goals and objectives for industrial development, to encourage the continued development of high-value industrial uses as a source of high-paying jobs and positive revenue for municipal services. Lucas Towing Yard, no. The other gentlemen who avoided coming here tonight, the auto pallets, none of them are high-valued industrial uses, and I've written to you to explain that they do not provide positive revenue for municipal services. It is, I suggest, that when next time you print the master plan, you distribute the copies to the outhouses at Riverbent Park, because then they will enjoy... Have a purpose, because they apparently have no purpose or meaning to any of you sitting up here. As for you, the idea that you can narrowly construe his actions with regard to paying his taxes to one property, it is an indication that he does not play by the rules. An average citizen, if you're getting car insurance, if you're getting jobs, if you're getting a loan, they check your references, they check your history, they find out what you've been doing, they check your credit scores, they check your Facebook page, and yet Mr. Wynn wants to suggest that he doesn't have to check anything. Everybody comes to this podium, every property owner, and they're just like a bunch of saints, and then you take action, like you did tonight, of cutting off discussion from the citizens who pay for the chairs that you're sitting on, pay for the microphones you used, pay for the ceiling over your head. It is just disgraceful the way you conducted yourselves tonight, and that's all I have to say.
Sir, did you have a comment? Ma'am, could you move your billfold so this gentleman can speak?
Andrew Jerris, 2632 Hawthorne Drive South, Shelby Township. I received its agenda tonight, presumably because I spoke at the last hearing. You had about 20 to 30 people exit the building, and I believe they wanted to speak on the condominiums, but the chair said the hearing was closed to the public. The heading of this is "Public Hearing," so my question is, when does the... Mr. Weyer actually commented if the public had a chance to speak on it. So my question is, when would the public have a chance to speak on that? Now, number two on the... My second question is on the light manufacturing to R-12. You asked if the landowner was present, which they're not. You didn't ask if anyone who has an interest, a vested interest, is present, and the question is, did you extend the invite to the public hearing to anyone that has a vested interest in that lease or some nature? Thank you.
You know, not that I'm required to answer your questions, but I answer them. The second one first. The item was tabled so that the property owner could come and ask the question. That person wasn't here, so the condition for which that was titled couldn't be met, so it was time for us to make a decision and to vote. And in the prior issue, there was a public hearing that you likely weren't at, to which we took comment for probably an hour regarding this issue. And so that public comment was closed. That public hearing was closed, so there really wasn't an existing hearing. We didn't adjourn the hearing. It was closed to address issues that were addressed, and so this body then voted on, voted on, and took action, so...
Mr. Chairman, just to expand on that, when we have a public hearing, there's a couple ways it can be handled procedurally. Mr. Kirk, correct me if I'm wrong. We open the public hearing, we take public comment, no matter how long that takes. We don't care how long it takes. And then when we get... When we have all those comments have been addressed, or when then nobody else wants to speak, then we close that hearing, which means there's no additional public comment, and that happened tonight in both of those. The other case, which was the condominiums, that public hearing was... We had that public hearing. Multiple people spoke. We closed the public hearing. When... There's no notice requirement after that, beyond that, nobody gets... There's no legal requirement to send notices. We've commonly provided an agenda or notice subsequent to anybody who was...
We've commonly provided an agenda or notice subsequent to anybody was interested in knowing what's, what's the follow-up. So that's why anybody that spoke last time or put their name down in both of these cases, we, we extended them the courtesy of sending them the agenda. So they could either, the purpose of that is twofold. They could come tonight and see what the comment, you know, what the changes are, or they could come to the counter and go over the plans with us, and we'll spend any amount of time that's necessary to counter going over plans with people. We want them to be fully informed. That goes well beyond the normal notice requirements that most communities follow and state requires, but we think it's necessary. But just as a matter of explanation.
I appreciate, that was my question.
Now, the other thing, it could be, a public hearing could be adjourned, which means we want to get a lot more information back, and we'll reopen it, but that's, you know, that's a technical requirement. Neither of those things occurred, they were both technically closed.
In fact, no new issues were introduced on either of those items that would require, you know, and that was part of the reason too.
I just mentioned it because it seems like a lot of people were here that were visiting. I had no more to say on any matter here tonight other than this, but the question, did you answer my question on the, any lease? You said the property owner was, had any responsibility?
Yeah, we just sent the letter to, to the owner of the property, not to anybody else.
It would have been their responsibility to do that.
Because for our records, they're the, they're the owner of record based on our, our files, and we, when, when we do that, we go to the assessing, our assessing records, and whoever shows up, shows up. Now, if they have lease agreements with somebody else, we wouldn't know that.
You do know that. It's the officer deeds.
Yeah, but it's not on, it doesn't reflect on the assessing department records.
Mineral rights, perceived surface rights.
Well, that, that's not how we deal with our notice requirements, though.
Okay.
Just, I mean, that's just technically how we've done it.
Okay. But you know my concern for the last-
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. I don't, I'm not quarreling with that, I just want to explain the procedure, though. I don't-
It's an ongoing process, so.
Yeah, understood. Understood, good point.
And with that, unless anyone else wants something to say?
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we're adjourned.
they heard your one issue, and they went home. Just a thought. And the planners put them first so they could get out early, am I right?